All right, Lars, you're good to go.
Okay. Welcome, everyone, to the special designer review board meeting of February 28th. We are, I guess, doing our last meeting on Zoom. And so we get to read scripts. This meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means consistent with State of California Executive Order regarding the COVID-19 pandemic. Zoom is being utilized for this meeting. In case of technical issues, meetings will be uploaded to the city website as soon as possible after the meeting. We will be conducting today's meeting using Zoom. Designer Review Board members and staff are participating from remote locations, practicing appropriate social distancing. Members of the public may view and listen to the meeting by use of Zoom as noted on the city's website and as noted on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to speak to the designer review board may do so during public comment or may comment on agenda items during discussion of each item and must be logged into Zoom. Anyone using abusive, vulgar, offensive, threatening, or harassing language, personal attacks of any kind, or offensive terms that target specific individuals or groups will be muted and removed from the meeting. Please do not abuse this new way to provide public comment. All right, so we have a roll call, John.
Kerry Bush?
Here.
Christine Lovell?
Here.
Lynn Dieter?
Here.
Vice Chair Melissa Henley?
Here.
And Chair Lars Langberg?
Here.
And I do not see Marshall Belt in attendance today, so we will mark him as absent.
Okay, thank you, John. So we have no minutes to approve, so any update from the planning department?
Yeah, so our, the planning department, this, our last week deemed the City Ventures project, the Canopy, which is an 80-unit housing project at the north end of town behind the O'Reilly Center, complete. So they will be moving on to the next step of their process, which is going through a environmental impact report. So we are starting that process here pretty soon. Also, the Barlow Hotel, which is going to be proposed at the old Yaki Building, is moving forward also with an EIR. So those are two large projects that we have in the pipeline for DRB review in the future. And I think that's it as far as projects go. I don't know, Kerry, if you have anything additional. I know some folks will probably want to have an update on the hotel and possibly Woodmark.
Sure, and actually, just as a note for anyone who's out there, our special projects page on the planning department's website is kept up to date. In terms of Woodmark, they are cleaning up some last comments on their grading permit application, but are getting close to issuance for that, and their building permit for the first phase, which is 48 units, likely start construction in March, mid to late March sometime. Depending on the weather and rains, obviously, they need to dry spell to get started on some of that stuff. And then the hotel is working on an agreement and federal approval of their archaeology work, which they need to do prior to starting construction. But they have pulled their building permits, that was pulled back in October, and they are working on the frontage improvement stuff pretty intensely with our engineering department.
Great. All right, well, thanks for that. Anybody have any questions for staff on any of those things, any projects? Okay, we can move along then. Any comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda? Anybody in attendance have comments on other things, or do you have any emails, John, or?
No, we did not receive any comments for items not on the agenda, but we did receive a couple of comments that I forwarded onto the board, and then also one comment that's posted on the website.
Okay, for this, for the project that is on the agenda?
For this, yeah, for tonight's project, or tonight's agenda item.
Yep, okay, great. Any statements of conflict of interest from the board? All right. Oh, Christine, you have your hand up. Conflict of interest?
No, not conflict of interest.
Okay, so.
We're done with conflict of interest.
Okay, well, we can move on to the regular agenda then. So the project, the first, the House at First Street, Designer Review.
Lars, my hand is up.
I understand that. I saw that, Christine, I'm just finishing the announcement of our agenda item, and then I will call on you.
Okay, thank you.
So our regular agenda item, how residents of Adu at First Street, Designer Review True Removal and Free Protection Plan. So before we get to a staff report, Christine, you wanted to say something?
Yes, please, thank you, Lars. I wanted to discuss a procedural concern that I have regarding this agenda item, and then I will make a motion. So at our last DRB meeting on Wednesday, the 22nd of February, I asked that due to the complexity of the issues surrounding this particular agenda item, that we get the staff report and all of the information sooner and not later, and certainly no later than Wednesday, the 22nd, sorry, the last DRB meeting on the 15th. Just because we normally get the Thursday information for a Wednesday meeting and this meeting the day earlier, so no later than the Wednesday prior. And on Thursday, it's late in the day, we got a 113-page staff report, and it did not include the project plan. But it was a rather extensive and dense staff report, which included several letters from lawyers that spoke in legalese, and then, sorry, I had an interruption, and, you know, citing case law and stuff, and so that would naturally take a longer time to review and consider. And then on Friday, late in the day, the project plan showed up on the website. And my understanding is that the public was noticed on late Friday also. And so, and then I talked to the arborist, because I had a question regarding the trees, and she wasn't even aware that this meeting was occurring. And then I got a text from her at 2:30 telling me that she had just learned about the meeting at 3:30 today. So I just feel that we're just not adequately prepared for this meeting. We haven't had the documents long enough. Today, I got more documents dropped into my email box at 11:38 called combined set. I picked it up at 1:41. I didn't even have time to look at it, to be honest with you. So I just feel that we on the DRB are not adequately prepared to address all the complexities involved with this project. And so my motion is to continue the meeting until the regularly scheduled DRB meeting on April 11th, and that all documents be presented in one package, all-inclusive, with printed-out full-scale plans, and no later than two weeks before the meeting, and that the public be noticed, as would be done with a planning commission hearing.
Okay, thank you for that, Christine. So if there's an actual motion on the table, we would need a second, and then we could have a discussion on that, so. Lynn, you're seconding the motion?
I second that motion, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so let's, anybody on the board want to talk about this motion to continue? Lynn, you can, yeah, go ahead, Lynn.
Yeah, I encountered a couple of the neighbors when I was out looking at the property, I guess, Sunday. They were oblivious to any meeting coming forward, and some apparently didn't get the mail, the others did. So as far as reaching out to the public, I think that we haven't done a good job, and I really agree with Christine as far as the number of pages that we had to read in a very short time, and given the busy lives we live, it's tough.
Okay, actually, given what you're saying, Lynn, or both of you are saying, I'd like to ask staff to comment on a couple of things. One is the application that we were first sent only had two drawings in it, and is, so is that what the applicant submitted? And then they submitted the remainder of the drawing package later, and that's why it got uploaded later? So that's one question, is just about the what was submitted, and if that was sort of, you know, do the typical protocol? And then also the noticing to the neighbors, because it's my understanding this is not a typical designer review board type project, and it's not, is it true it's not actually required to notice the neighbors? Is that right? Could you guys comment on that, those things?
Yeah, so first, for the noticing part, this project is not subject to the public noticing requirements that we have in our code, but we, we did, based off of the previous meetings in January of last year and September of, or August of '21, and the public comments that we received, we did notice the public as kind of a courtesy to let them know that the project was, you know, moving forward after that January 5th meeting. As far as the documents go within the staff report, it was an error by myself and staff that when I was creating that full document, I apparently had that open, and when I create or when I save the file, those drawings were not included in that initial document. I did reach out, and we did get those updated drawings on the website Friday afternoon. So it was within the 72-hour timeframe that's required. But I do understand, you know, the confusion that that could have caused with board members and members of the public.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that, John. Kerry or Melissa, any comments on the motion at hand?
Quick question, Christine, do you mean the, the meeting of March 14th, not April? That you'd continue it to? It would be our next meeting?
No, I'm, I'm, I, I am, I am motioning to, to the April 11th meeting, and that is because I believe that the March 14th meeting is the first hybrid meeting, and I had some indication from staff that there may be some, you know, problems trying to get it to work at first and get everything to work. So I feel we should work, iron down those issues before we have this meeting.
And this, this is a. I can speak to that, too.
You agree?
I'll speak to that when you're done with your comment, because there's a couple other developments that may assist us there.
Okay, yeah, I, that was a factor in my coming up with the date. Also, I want to make sure that we have adequate time to review these plans, and I didn't even get to review the plans, because there's so much, the plans came up, and, and I, you know, I don't have a gigantic screen, so it's just impossible for me to sit there with these plans and zoom in, zoom out, zoom in, zoom out on the computer screen, and I can't, you know, I couldn't even get them printed out. And now I suppose it seems like it's on me to print the plans out these days in a full-scale size that's actually readable. So, I mean, I would like to get all of the documents that are pertinent to this meeting together in one package at one time, and then have a chance to review them. And I, like everybody else on this board, is a working professional, so it's not like I can devote every second in the, you know, 72 hours. I don't know where that, what that rule is, but, I mean, I need time to review these things.
Okay. Thank you for that. So Kerry, do you want to address?
Sure, and I can address a couple of things there. Thank you, Lars. The 72 hours is actually the, the state requirement. We generally put them out earlier than the 72 hours required by the Brown Act, but that's where that comes from. Let's see, in terms of the hybrid meetings, the city is moving to hybrid on March 1st, i.e. tomorrow, which is part of the reason why this was, this was scheduled, because it's, everyone's used to this format at this, at this point, and it felt like that would be helpful. However, the first hybrid meetings the city will be having will be March 7th. We have a city council, we have a public art meeting. And so I think this is sort of jumping to the next discussion topic of the, when the DRB meetings would be scheduled, and I believe the, the, the question on the table John confirmed for me was that it would be the fourth Tuesday, so that would, you know, and I would feel certainly comfortable if it's the fourth Tuesday in March to, that we will have the King's Work Docs, we'll have head city council planning commission, climate action, and public art committee meetings all hybrid by then. So I think that's, we, I would not want to delay the project for the applicant because of that issue, for sure.
But then, so part of that next agenda item meetings is not just related to the next one, but if we have one or two per month, right?
Correct, correct, yes.
Factor. Okay, so that's, that's sort of a little bit of an aside as to where, if we continue, when we would continue to, but let's just talk about first, I guess, any other comments about whether we should continue the item or not. Melissa?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm when the applicant made this application. I see some dates have been redacted in the application, but I see one date in October. Has this been with us since October?
I see.
Actually, I can, Greg's here as part of the applicant, and he can probably answer it the best.
Can, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Right, yeah, 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 we, we submitted in December.
Okay.
And everything was there. Yeah.
I think, I think we should avoid delaying too much more, since this project has been going on for quite some time. And I'm sure the applicant and the neighbors are all eager to have some kind of resolution, but I do absolutely understand the need for thorough review. We're not doing anyone a service if we don't have all of the data.
Yeah, okay.
Can I ask Larry to, I'd like to, I'm concerned about our clients' expectations and rights in this, too. I'm not disagreeing with everybody's points, but I think that my, our client, you know, the applicant needs to be, their rights and interests need to be protected here, too. So I just want to make sure, Larry, can you speak to that?
Chair, I'd give my direction from the chair.
Sure, yeah, so I guess the question is if we, so it's certainly within our right as a board to continue an agenda item if we feel, for whatever reason, that needs to happen, and we certainly were always trying to be very conscious about the applicants and the time and effort that they've put in. So but I guess, actually, I'm not sure, Greg, what is your question? If it, if it is continued, certainly it's inconveniencing the client, but.
Yeah, I, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, no, please.
I was just going to say that I, I think the, I, I, so first, I just want to say the planning's effort in this and the correspondence with John of late have, have been appreciated. And, and, but I, I do think that the delay in you guys getting this information is not the fault of the applicant and the homeowner. And especially with this going on for a couple of years now for a single-family home, I, I am, the financial and the stress and everything that this has put the clients through, I don't know how they're going to feel about another thing and happening here. And a, a delay to April will have an impact, because we would like to, you know, break ground as early into the dry season as possible, so that the site can be as clean and protected and on before we get into the next rainy season.
Sure.
So this delay does have an impact financially and affects the schedule of the project, and I just want, you know, the, the, the reason for the, the late information getting to you not being the fault of ours or the app, or the owner. Is that your question, Lars?
Well, that, yes, that, I understand your, your concern with that. I don't think there's a legal question in there, per se. It's up to the board to review the agenda item, to approve, deny, or continue the agenda item. That's how we work. So Larry, maybe if you could, you could add, if there's anything to add to that, that'd be great. That's my view of how, how things work, but.
No, Chair, I, I would agree. I don't see a real legal issue there, especially if it's discontinued into March.
Okay, thank you. Christine, you have your hand up there?
Yes, I just want to clarify two points. I mistakenly understood that our design review board meetings would be the last day of the month. I mean, I'm sorry, the second day of them, the second Tuesday, not the fourth. So that, and I feel that this second Tuesday, given all the confusion here, and I, and the beginning of the hybrid meetings, I think, I decided or thought that March 14th would be too early, but if we're on the fourth, then I can revise my, my motion to meeting on the 28th of March, not on the 11th of April. Number two, with all due respect to the applicant, we gave guidance on the application 14 months ago. And we haven't, as a board, seen anything since until beginning last Thursday, and then dribbling in over the next few days. So while they've had 14 months to respond, we've had two working days. And I'm just simply asking in fairness to everybody, including the applicant, that we have adequate time to review a complete package that's all in one piece, not a bunch of little pieces dribbling around and coming in on emails.
Okay.
So I would revise my motion to the 28th of March if, you know, that's appropriate, if, if indeed our monthly meeting is on the last day of the month.
Well, I think that.
The last, go ahead, you know what I mean, the last.
Yeah.
Day, not the second.
Well, would, I mean, if, would you revise your motion to the next meeting of the designer review board? We don't know when that is yet, so we can't really give it a date, but it seems if we were to continue, it's not going to be tomorrow, it's not going to, it's going to be next week at the earliest that we meet. And again, in fairness to the applicant, if we continue, we should do it as quickly as we can. So it could, you know, would it be fair to say, to revise your motion to say to the next meeting of the designer review board?
Well, okay. Langberg, if I may, on this, on this one?
Yeah, go ahead.
Given the fact that there's a number of folks here from the public, and we know we can accommodate it on March 28th, I would, even though it doesn't need to be noticed, we did send out notices like we do for a public hearing, well in advance, and I'm not quite sure why people didn't get them till Friday. But regardless, it, I think it'd probably be helpful to actually do, continue to a date certain, just to be, since there is a, a date we know we can target, March 28th, even if it's not, you know, we, even if it's a special meeting of the DRB, we know we can accommodate that.
Okay. And given all the logistics of the meeting times and sites and other meetings with the city, I know that's a big challenge, so you're saying that's kind of the first known, certain.
Known availability, correct, yeah.
Okay.
That most likely your regular meeting date, but if it's not, at least this group of folks who are interested in the project would know about it.
Okay.
The other note I, I did have is I don't know if there's any desire to hear the applicants' in-staff presentation as a way of at least getting a little bit more information out there before continuing it, if, if the board so desires. I don't know how, if you guys want to consider that or not.
Okay, we could, we could talk about that. Christine, before I call on you, I just want to see if Kerry Bush, if you have any comments, since you haven't spoken yet.
Well, thanks. Yeah, I just, it's a special hearing, you know, I mean, today's Tuesday, it's the first Tuesday I think I've ever seen a DRB meeting happen in the eight years I've been on the board, so, you know, special hearing, and there's a lot of information to, to go through. I'll be perfectly honest, I actually took the time to go through all the information and download the information and kind of review the information because of the special hearing, so I'm, I'm feeling very prepared for the meeting today. So that's just how I sit on the board, and I, I do respect the, the motion being made by other board members. I'm, I'm at luxury at least to have, you know, several screenings here to look at and kind of go through and even print out some of the information for myself to kind of get through, so I'm, I'm feeling prepared.
Okay. Thank you for that. And Melissa, did you have anything else you wanted to add before I call it?
Yeah, I'm in the same boat as Kerry. I, I was able to get through it all and watched all five-plus hours of the YouTube videos from past events. Y'all had some colorful chats, so yeah, I'm feeling up to speed.
Okay, great, thank you. Christine, any, any comments?
I always just wanted to reiterate that I would like to, for what Kerry was saying about talking about some of the, the items now, I think it would be useful to have all of the information at hand in front of us. So for example, while Melissa and Kerry have reviewed everything, they haven't heard from the city arborist, because she wasn't even told about this. You know, I have, because I talked to her, so that's, again, missing information that you guys don't have. And so I would just reiterate that I would like to see all of the information pertinent to this meeting presented in one package with everybody noticed and everybody prepared to comment on it, rather than this hodgepodge of stuff arriving at different times.
Right. So the city arborist can't be, is not going to be present, but her, there's information in our report from her, certainly originally, I know. Lynn, go ahead.
Yeah, my concern is this is not being well-handled by the public, and you know, Ken Jacobs sent a late letter, I guess, today, that kind of capsulized the, his feelings and, and from my brief experience, that of several others, that we need to be open with the public on what we're doing.
Okay, thank you. Kerry Anstrom, just to go back to your comment, like, so if we, if we were to continue but hear the staff report and the applicant's presentation, we would vote on the continuance and then do all that, or we'd listen to it all and then decide we still want to continue?
And since I have the luxury of a city attorney here, this is why. But, so I'll take a stab at it, and, and you can confirm or correct me. So there is a motion on the floor. You would need to vote on this motion if you want, or the, and if it is continued, it would simply be continued and not opened. If you wanted to hear the staff report, either at the make of the motion, board member level, would need to amend that motion. Or the motion should just be voted down if that's the, the preference. Larry, is there another way to do this? And then you would continue at, at a later time after you've heard the reports?
Taking a quick look at the rules here, and the planning director does state it correctly. You have a motion to continue on your floor. planning director does state it correctly. You have a motion to continue on your floor. I would, uh, question whether there's an advantage to splitting the hearing, so to speak. Because there's quite a bit of time between this meeting and the next meeting if it were to be continued. I'm not sure that's the best approach, but, um, legally you have a motion on the floor needs to be dealt with.
Right, right. Before we move forward. Uh huh, okay. So we have a motion to continue to meeting, I guess now March twenty eighth and a second. Uh, we could, is there any further discussion? And otherwise we could take a vote. I believe that's the, would be the next step. Christine?
I, I just want to reread the motion just so that, so that we, we hear it again right before we vote. So my motion is to continue the meeting until March the twenty eighth. And that all documents presented are presented in one package, all inclusive pertinent to that meeting with full scale printed plans available. And no later than two weeks before the meeting. And that public notice be provided as would be done similarly with a planning commission hearing.
Okay, um, so that's just a legal, sort of a protocol question. And that's, that's a desire on the case of one of our members, but legally that they, it only has to be brought in at seventy-two hours ahead of the meeting. Is that correct?
So I understand the motion is to expand what would be legally required, um, or to change what's legally required. And make the information available a bit earlier.
Right, that's, that's the request.
And you can consider that her original motion was amended and you would ask the maker of the second whether, um, he would agree to that.
Right.
You have a proper motion on the floor.
Right, yeah. Um, so the motion has been amended. Uh, Lynn, are you, can you, will you, you're still in, still seconding that?
Yeah, I second it.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion to continue. Um, this agenda item till the March twenty eighth meeting as noted with, uh, all the materials provided. Um, let's go ahead and take a vote.
All right, uh, Christine Lovell?
Aye.
Uh, Lynn Dealer?
Aye.
Carrie Bush?
Nay.
Vice Chair Melissa Hamley?
Nay.
And Chair Lars Langberg?
Aye.
And so that motion passes three ayes to two nays.
Okay, so our agenda item A has now been continued to our meeting of March twenty eighth. And, uh, to the previous discussion, it seems like, um, it would be best just to do the whole item at that time rather than going through a staff report and applicant presentation now. That doesn't seem like, uh, would make a lot of sense unless someone else has, uh, other comments about that or points about that. Okay, um, seeing none, we will, uh, move on to our next agenda item, which is a discussion about our DRB meetings moving.
Yeah, so the, um, discussion here is, as Carrie mentioned earlier, to, um, potentially move our DRB meetings to the fourth Tuesday of the month, um, starting at three thirty, um, PM. And they would, um, uh, need to end before our planning commission meetings do start at six PM that, um, that same day in the same location. So if there is a meeting that we anticipate going longer than, uh, at least five thirty PM, then we would want to schedule a special meeting, um, earlier in the, uh, in the month to handle that. Uh, but I wanted to make sure that I gave all board members the chance to, um, provide their input on if, um, moving to a once a month meeting format would, uh, work for all board members. I know we changed the date, which was originally the first and third Wednesdays of the month to the second and, um, fourth Tuesdays recently. Um, and with us going back to a hybrid format, um, we're kind of limited on the, uh, space and location for our meetings, uh, to the community center. Um, so I just want to open it up from there and then, um, if there's anything else that you may have as far as questions go, I can try and answer them and if not, um, Carrie's here to answer any additional things.
And John, can I add a couple of just developments?
Yeah.
Um, so the agenda item talks about either the second or the fourth Tuesday. Um, in the meantime, the climate action committee has asked if they can do the second Tuesday that works better for their members. They have like fourteen members, so that's, it's kind of hurting cats, uh, for that one. Um, so if it does not matter to this board, that would be, um, the, the update to that. And then I guess the only, um, question I would have is the meeting time for agenda items. I mean, when we know it's going to be a longer agenda item such as the, the first street, we would want a lot more than an hour and a half, I think for that, yeah, just to make sure the DRB can get through their business. And then the thought about having the once a month is that if we do have, um, additional, you know, projects, uh, generally I think that is probably, having had discussions with John, adequate for the DRB's business. Um, the, if we do have something where we need to balance out, we would contact you in terms of a, a special meeting. Um, and that could be one of the other Tuesdays or, uh, of the month, which is also available at the community center.
Okay, um, so, so the proposal is from, or the, from the city is to do the fourth Tuesday of the month, one meeting a month. Uh, just, uh, if I understood you correctly, there's a, there's a meeting after hours, after hour meeting. So we're always going to be a potentially limited by that. Right?
Correct. Every Tuesday of the month has a six o'clock meeting. Um, the first through the fourth, other than the fifth Tuesday. So first and third Tuesdays are city council at six o'clock, planning commission is second and fourth also at six o'clock. Uh, we have quite a bit more control over the second and fourth because I set the agendas for the planning commission and John sets it for the DRB. Um, and so that's a little bit easier. We've been requested from the city clerk to try to avoid the first and third for a regular meeting at least, um, due to the city council. Some, they often have a closed session or interviews before or starting earlier on those days.
Right, okay.
And I, and I will note fourth Tuesdays, I mean, this, the, the community center has the whole day booked for city meetings. So it could go earlier. My understanding from, from John was that previously that, that you know, everyone wants, including climate action and the other committees want later in the day generally for their members, uh, convenience.
Okay, so we could start earlier. It just seems a little restrictive. If we only have one meeting a month to, you know, have an end, an end time, you know, there's definitely meetings that do go longer. So every time that starts to happen, we have to continue an item. And how long, and then that item, either we have to call a special meeting or it's three or four months down the road potentially. So that it seems very, we have very limited choices here, very restrictive. And I guess that's just part of the logistics of, uh, of renovations to city hall or, uh, changes of that.
Yeah, a lot of it is the hybrid, um, format because we're limited to the community centers where they have the ability to do that. And we don't have, you know, they, they are, they would be, they have the technology, all of the equipment set up down there. That's, that's really the, what's restricting us is the
Okay.
The availability down there. Uh, now I will say, yes, and you know, and just looking at, um, our normal Tues, fourth Tuesdays. It looks like John and I in terms of the planning department could go as early as one PM. Uh, but again, that, I know that has impacts for folks who are working, um, which is most of the folks in this group.
Yeah. Okay. So, uh, and Tuesday is the community center day. There's, we, it's, right, okay. Uh, well, any, uh, comments or questions from the board here? Uh, Christine?
I just want to say, um, I'm, I'm fine with, with the plan here. I, I just am also a little concerned about not having enough time in the meetings, especially if we have once a month. I don't know if there's any way to, to reserve another potential time for a special meeting if we need it during the month. I was going to suggest that for the second Tuesday, but that seems that the climate action committee is going to be taking that time slot. Is that correct, Harry?
So anyway. That is correct. I think they're meeting at either three or three thirty because they're, they're actually, they have an hour and a half meeting normally. Uh, they actually by choice are going to once a month, which is why this could potentially work. Uh, but they're, they're going to go to a two hour meeting slot. So they're, they're starting, I think, at, um, even three or three thirty.
So it seems like our only meeting potential time that we have is that last or that second, fourth Tuesday. I'm sorry, the fourth Tuesday in that time slot. That's really, given all the other parameters with the technology and using the community center. That's the only time that's available for DRB. Is that correct?
Sorry, they, yes, the community center has earlier time slots, but if folks, and they do have earlier time slots, I think on Mondays. Uh, on Mondays and Wednesdays, but that has not been, again, the earlier time, i- it's that four o'clock thing and their classes start at the community center, um, on Mondays, Wednesdays and Thursdays at four PM.
So if we get, if, if, if we get a backlog, I guess where I'm trying to go with this is if we start to get a backlog of projects, is there a potential other time that we could use as a, like a special meeting if this were to come up? So that people don't get backlog months waiting to be heard from, you know, with.
I think what I would say to that is, you know, this doesn't need to be for everything. If the once a month does not work, um, either we can, John and I can work with the climate action committee to move their meeting time. Or we can work with you and we, or we can work with the community center to find some, either at a, a, a different date entirely. So you can go back to twice a month or a different time that allow, you know, you know, for, for special meetings and such. I think that's a good point, Christine, that, you know, we don't know if this is going to be enough or not. Uh, if it's not, we certainly don't want a backlog from folks. Um, and, and we will certainly monitor and adjust. This is not a set in stone, you know, ten commandments kind of a thing. It's just a, hey, we, you know, we do need to adjust to the hybrid, which we've been directed by council. How do we do that? Uh, the planning department has to move, move, you know, we're kind of had to readjust all, all our schedules too. Um, but it realizes it's a, it's not necessarily what our boards and committee members had uh, expected when they signed up and with a particular time and date. So we're asking for some flexibility and patience as we work through this.
Thank you, Carrie. That's all good to hear.
Okay, any other, so we're looking at a three thirty meeting, uh, this fourth Tuesday, starting on the twenty eighth of March. Any other questions, comments for the board? Everybody okay with that? Okay. Then we'll just, we'll start with that. I don't know, do we need to call a vote for that?
It's a motion.
Our, your, your ordinance for the DRB in the municipal code says that you, as a board, can set your time and meeting places. So if you're, since we're changing it formally, you should, uh, motion second and vote, please.
Okay, who would like to bash it a motion?
So we're clear? Uh, I say believe, I believe the motion is to, uh, carry designer review board meetings on the fourth Tuesday of every month at three thirty PM.
That sounds right. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, call a vote? All in favor? How about that?
Um, we'll do an official vote, so we have it.
Thank you.
Sorry. Lynn Dealer?
Aye.
Lovell?
Aye.
Carrie Bush?
Aye.
And Vice Chair Melissa Hamley?
Aye.
And Chair Lars Langberg?
Right.
All right, so that motion passes five zero with, um, Marshall being absent.
Okay.
And just one note for the March twenty eighth is, I was, since that's the target date for the first street, and I think everyone would like to not have to continue that if we have all the information, given the applicant's patience. Um, I am thinking that I may work with the planning commission to see if they can start their meeting a little later. Just so that there is a bit more of a buffer for that. So, but thank you.
Okay. Christine?
Carrie, I totally agree with you. I think it's going to be a long meeting because we're going to have to revisit the M eight. And then go through the regular designer review board process. So I, I think if we, the longer, or even if we have to start earlier, I don't know if anybody's up for that, but well, when we discussed the M eight, it was a three hour meeting. So I think we should be prepared for that.
Uh, okay, so should we just start this meeting earlier? Uh, that, no.
Three thirty. We just made a motion. We're ready to go.
Yeah.
We'll just keep it to two hours.
There you go. That seems fairly reasonable, I think.
I think that's very reasonable, yes. Okay, uh, great. Thanks for that, everyone. And, uh, we'll, we'll have our first hybrid meeting. Um, subcommittee updates, um. Christine, do you want to update us on the design review, design guidelines subcommittee?
Actually, I'd like to update on parklets.
Which is the same, same subcommittee, so.
Yeah. So, um, yeah, I, I, I sent out an email. We had the meeting about the parklets and I would just encourage everybody to review the San Francisco document. I, I don't have that link, of course, right in front of me here regarding parklets. Cause it, it's a, it's a beautiful document and I wish that we as a city could follow that document. And, um, it really will encourage all of you to start figuring out how you could sponsor a parklet. I certainly feel that way after looking at that document. So we, we went through, um, some discussion with our consultant. But, um, I just, I just wanted to say that I felt like we were in the weeds and then I read the, the San Francisco document that Paul Fritz let me to and, and that's a, a great description of parklets and how to make it work.
Yes.
Showing that out there.
That's great. Yeah, the background is just the parklets, you know, there was a parkland ordinance put in place a few years ago, but there was never the sort of mechanisms of how to actually do it if you wanted to do one. So that's what's happening now. There's a consultant been brought on to develop the actual logistics of the parkland ordinance. And they came to us with taking Healdsburg and Sonoma's parklets, which were, I think, very much developed during COVID. And we're finding they're not really fully in the spirit of, of the original parklets from which San Francisco was such a model of. And even the early spirit of the Sebastopol Parkland Ordinance came from that. So I think it's a really good point Christine is making, sort of a lot of the comments we, as a subcommittee have been making, the consultant are really about. You know, what is the intent, the real intention of this? And put that out there as this broad overview, intentional. Yeah, we want, we want these for this reason, not just, you know, how, what's the lighting or what's the barrier or what, all the logistics of it. Um, so, yeah, it was, it's been a lively discussion. Um, so that's kind of still in process and then the, the, uh, objective design standards discussion. We're waiting for the consultant to give us their updated uh, standards that we would review to eventually adopt for Sebastopol. We're kind of waiting for that at this point with that one. Uh, so that's the subcommittee update. Um, so unless there's anything else people have, they can adjourn our meeting. we can adjourn our meeting for today. Uh, thanks, everyone.
Everyone.
Thanks, Lars.
Thanks, Lars.
See you soon.